If you would like to join me in prayer, please do so at this time. Father God, with the election looming, we stand here today and we just give such thanks and praise for the protection that you afford on us and that you protect us tomorrow as well, Father. We ask that there be a sense of calmness and understanding in our nation as there always has been. We thank those who seek public office, those who are willing to serve and put themselves out there to better their local communities and further up the chain. Lord, we thank you particularly tonight for two of our members who have so faithfully served this town, this community. We thank them. We ask you that you bless them and you give them good health and their families and all that they do. We pray this in your name.
Thank you, Chief. This time I'd like for a meeting to order. We have all members of council present. If everybody could please rise and pledge allegiance. Councilwoman, here it is.
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands our nation under God and indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
All righty. Our first item of business, we have presentation from our councilmembers who are leading us. So why don't we all gather round down in front of the dais. Councilwoman, I've stuck to your lead this evening, so I'm going to start with Councilman Schenk and then we'll roll if you will bring your couple pictures. Oh, absolutely. I'm not going to let you get away that easy. All right, we have a couple of items. Now folks, as most of you know, I mean, this council has been together for a long time. And all the time that I've served here, this is the longest that we've had a group together. And the things that we've accomplished in this city together as a family has been exceptional. I mean, you just take a look around, see where the city is now and where it was and what used to happen up here on the dais just 15, 16 years ago. A lot of folks don't remember those days and we don't ever want to go back to them. Councilman Schenk has faithfully served the city for nine and seven eighths years, something like that, we're trying to figure it out. He had won a special election. So we have a resolution for him and then a gift. And none of this is enough for what you guys have done, but the resolution reads, it's a resolution of the City of Oviedo, Florida honoring Deputy Mayor Stephen Schenk, whereas Deputy Mayor Stephen Schenk is being recognized for 13 years of dedicated service to the city. Now, I said nine and seven eighths, but follow me through. As a member of the Land Planning Agency, Planning, Zoning and Deals Board, councilmember and deputy mayor. Councilman Schenk did serve on some of our boards before winning his council seat. Whereas the City of Oviedo commends Stephen Schenk for his service to the community through his hard work and commitment to the residents of the City of Oviedo and the surrounding communities as a member of the Oviedo Winter Springs Chamber of Commerce and the Public School Facilities Planning Committee. Whereas the City of Oviedo desires to recognize the accomplishments of this outstanding individual and to honor and express appreciation to him for being a respected and loyal member of the Oviedo City Council. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Oviedo, Florida, that the mayor and the city council on behalf of the entire Oviedo community commend you for your great achievements and extraordinary effort. It is with great appreciation and respect that we wish you continued success in your future endeavors. And this is presented for the 7th day, November 8, 2016. And for the rest of your life, you'll have my signature and all. (Applause). We can't hold hands. Oh, got to get your glasses. Get old. Honorable multi-folks. So this is a, for everybody to see, a little gift for Stephen on his way out. And it says, "Presented to Stephen Schenk in appreciation and recognition of 13 years of outstanding dedication and loyalty to the City of Oviedo as LPA and PDA board member, deputy mayor and councilmember from September 2003 through November 2016." And this is one of our goofy shots that we always did when we did our thing. So, Mr. Deputy Mayor? That's for you. This is for you as well? You've got a lot of heartwears. Where do you want to hold it? The resolution? Want to hold the resolution? All right, you get the medal this time. Take it. You good? Got it? All right, you keep your big round. Councilmember. We've always had this thing where there's councilwoman and councilmember.
When I was deputy mayor, that was easy.
Yes, it was. That's what I call the councilmember. It always switches around. It never did, right? Takes them six months. It really does. Again, resolution in the City of Oviedo, a resolution of the City of Oviedo, Florida honoring councilmember Cindy Drago. Whereas councilmember Cindy Drago is being recognized for six years of dedicated service as a councilmember and deputy mayor. And whereas the City of Oviedo commends Cindy Drago for her service to the community through her hard work and commitment to the residents of the City of Oviedo and the surrounding communities as a member of the Tri-City League of Cities, Seminole Community Alliance, Friends of Lake Jesa, and the Oviedo Winter Springs Chamber of Commerce. Whereas the City of Oviedo desires to recognize the accomplishments of this outstanding individual and honor and express appreciation to her for being a respected and loyal member of the Oviedo City Council. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Oviedo, Florida, that the mayor and the city council on behalf of the entire Oviedo community commend you for your great achievements and extraordinary effort. It is with great appreciation and respect that we wish you continued success in your future endeavors. Presented this 7th day of November 8, 2016. And you also will have my signature. (Applause). Keith will take it. So this is Cindy's plaque. I'm going to read it to you. To Cindy Drago, in appreciation and recognition of six years of outstanding dedication and loyalty to the City of Oviedo as deputy mayor and councilmember from December 2010 through November 2016. And I'll just say that that six years is just her time up here. And we've known her for a lot longer than that. She's been doing a lot of stuff long before that, so I want to wish you well.
Thank you.
And when you see her on Saturday in her striped shirt and Great Day in the Country, so.
No striped shirts.
Oh, excuse me. Oh, that's old school?
That's old school.
How are we going to recognize you?
It's your color.
There you go. Here we go. Slide over. Got it? Got it? Chuck, why don't you come on up and join me on? Come on, please. We insist. Guys, look at my drawing picture. All right. (Applause). All right. Thank you for sharing her with us. You only had her twice as long as you. This will be the first time in 16 years that we have two new members coming up at the same time. But it will be great for the city, great for the council, and to all the candidates. All seven of you who are out there campaigning hard, best of luck tomorrow. And at 7 o'clock, it will all be over. We've all been there. We know what that is like. Moving along, our next item of business, we have the approval minutes for October 17, 2016. I'd like to maintain a motion to do so. I have a motion second. I have a motion second. Any discussion? Hearing none of all the vote, all favor of motion, please signify by saying aye. Aye, aye, close. Motion carries. Moving on to item number three. That is the public comment portion of the meeting. Barbara, do we have any great requests this evening?
No.
No great requests? Is there anybody in the audience who would like to address council on any item? Hearing the singing, we will close the public comment portion, move on to the consent agenda, which are items four through 24 tonight. Where's the question, council?
Where's the question, council?
Second. Motion second. Councilman Stephen Schenk, anything?
Um, another, it's a new year, so a lot of newcomers have new things on the go. So we're all in that.
All righty. Councilman Britton?
Lot of stuff, all necessary.
Good. Good. Councilmember?
Good.
All right. Councilman? Good. All right. Hearing no discussion, I'll hold a question. Most of the table is to adopt the consent agenda as presented, all favor of the motion. Please signify by saying aye. Aye, aye, close. Motion carries. Moving on to item number 26, just seeing if you can catch up. This is going to be ordinance 24. Can we have the city attorney please read ordinance 1644 by telephone?
Yes, sir. Ordinance number 1644, an ordinance of the City of Oviedo, Florida, recommending the official zoning map to change the zoning district to approximately 2.76 acres located on the south side of Palm Street and on the east side of Lake Placid, having from residential R1 to office commercial OC, so actually providing for legislative intent, providing for implementing action, providing for non-application, providing for correction of scrubbers errors, providing for conflict, providing for several ability, and providing for an effective date.
Thank you very much. Mr. Cobb, will you invite us?
Thank you, Mayor. The existing residential R1 zoning district is not consistent with the property's office future reuse designation. Therefore, a change of zoning is requested. The proposed office commercial OC zoning district is consistent with the office future reuse designation. The office commercial zoning district is a neighborhood commercial. An office district that is designed to accommodate low intensity commercial uses with limited traffic generation and movements, it is recommended that the city council schedule a public hearing for Monday, December 5, 2016.
Thank you, Mr. Cobb. This time I'd like to maintain a motion to schedule a public hearing on December 5, 2016 at 6:30 p.m. Hearing the Oviedo City Council chambers at Oviedo City Hall, under Alexandria Boulevard, Oviedo, Florida, 32765. Second. Motion second. Councilman Britton? I just have one request, if I can make it of the aspects or an act. Is there an advocate representing here that would like to? Just come on up a second. Because I have a quick question. A little bit more of a comment. How are you?
Great. How are you, Mayor?
Long time no see. This is part of a larger project, what the zoning request. And I think that it could be helpful if our clients, as they presented to both the PDA or LPA, whatever alphabet to call it now, and ourselves, if we could see how it all fits into the story of the project. I think it might be helpful for the public to understand if that's possible.
Absolutely, Mayor. I think that's a great idea. For the record, Rebecca Wilson, 215. Do I need to speak? Rebecca Wilson, 215 North Yola Drive, with the law firm Lance Dross, Dr. Cantor and Reed here on behalf of the applicant. Mayor, we couldn't agree with you more. And that is currently a public record. We have had a pre-op now for the entire site. And when we go to planning and zoning in a couple of weeks and then come here, well, you're not going to be here. When we come here in December, we're happy to bring that and make that entire presentation.
We could make them say that and watch them. I'd appreciate that. I think it would be helpful for them.
Absolutely. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? No? All right, and hearing that, the motion on table is to schedule a public hearing, December 5, 6:30 p.m. Here at Oviedo City Hall. All favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye. Aye, aye, close. Motion carries. Moving along, resolutions none, discussion items none, Brian, do you have to report?
No, sir.
That is the kind of report we like on eve of election. City Attorney's Office, anything?
Yes, sir.
Well, Jennifer, welcome. And you came down here for all of the 15-minute debate.
My pleasure.
We appreciate it. All righty. Councilmember Drago, do you read all the reports on your last one? How's that?
Okay.
You can ask all the time you want.
Well, thank you. Thank you. Thank you for the resolution and your picture and that was very nice. I enjoyed my time here. I love working with everybody. I love the job. The job is very exciting. I've enjoyed it very much as a volunteer. And I'm going to miss it, I'm going to miss coming here and being part of all this. I feel that I'm ready to step down right in office time. And I think somebody helped you much, I started crying. You know, not much for a cryer, is it?
Well, I am.
I wanted to say, I really love being with all of you. I think that we really made a good team. We always seem to put the city, or the residents, on it above everything else, even when we disagree or vote yes, no, and everything. We always walked away supporting each other and supporting one vote, the final vote. You have wonderful families. I'd love to know them and really appreciate them. They have to put up with you guys, so of course they're wonderful all.
Thanks.
And I thank my husband for all his support. And he helped me drive for election six years ago and just worked hard to support me and supported me. And now he's here to thank my husband. Like I said, I'm a little bit lost for words tonight. And so, but I will plug in for Great Day in the Country. Then I can talk for you if I cry a little. Great Day in the Country is coming to Oviedo in part on Saturday, November 12. It's the first time it's going to be in that location. The Women's Club has been working for two years, planning and getting the credit. And of course, many of the departments of the city have been working very hard too. Great, great people. So I think we're really coming together. I think that we're just glad there. So we'll see how it goes. You should have received all of your invitations. And so I hope to be there. I understand you're going to help. So wish us luck. We think it's going to be good. And we're excited about this new venture and bringing this to the city and a good partnership. Thank you.
Give her a round of applause. I've got a break order here just a little bit. Deputy Mayor Schenk?
Thank you. It's been an honor, a pleasure. You know, this morning, we had a grateful event. Jennifer Simpson, the Olympic runner, who was first American woman to medal 1500. She's an Oviedo girl. She grew up here. You know, it's great to see pictures of her and all the child's running, you know, and Oviedo High School. And then, you know, she's got a flag draped around her. She's a world champion. And seeing kids that were there from both high schools in all. That's the kind of stuff that really makes this job amazing and fun. And you see the community spirit, the giving back, you know, the exuberance that she gave back. She saved for hours, I was going to say, I saved for a bunch of hours. About two hours after we were done, talking to those kids and giving back. And telling them about experiences, telling them how she trained, and just anything they wanted. She was just kept. Any more questions, guys? Anything else? That kind of sense of community. I know that's everybody who lives here, works here, that's what you're here for. That's what really makes you love being here. And it really is one of the greatest parts of the job, is to replicate in so many different ways, being a great day, you know, at whatever location, you know, whether it was at the school or not, being able to have those great moments. It's very special. So especially up here, to be part of that and to, you know, have a little piece, and I say it's a tiny, tiny, tiny piece today, sitting up here, because the reality is, and I said it for staff at the luncheon, I'll continue to say it forever, my real honor is working, that these guys, they do all the work. Everybody here, 300 employees, roughly, 300 employees that every day do the work, make everything happen, make the parks roll, make, you know, the police, the fire, make the water, the sludge or the sewers that we approved today, make that all happen. You know, we get to sit here and sometimes take a little bit of glory and take pictures, but that's what's really going on is the operator, the public works guy that I see all the time out in front of my place, Tuesdays I have to cut the lawn, you know, things like that. That's to me really very special and I'm privileged and honored to be able to work with them and to be able to say that I've worked with so many of them. It's been an honor. I appreciate all the help. I appreciate the picture, guys. And we packed it right up. I'll take it out. If you see the picture, the one thing that the deputy, that, I'm going to call you the deputy mayor, let me see if I saw that. That Councilman Schenk said, if you see, we're hanging on top of each other, enjoying ourselves. We, you know, we can't disagree. And you've seen, anybody who's been to one of the one meetings has seen us, we can disagree. But there is a level of respect and camaraderie that, that's the order. I respect everybody's decision of opinion. And I can laugh with them afterwards and go to football games and enjoy their company. So I'm very blessed. And I've seen the ever when it wasn't the case. As the mayor pointed out previously, about 15, 12, 15 years ago, things like that, when it wasn't the case. So, you know, I mean, feel very blessed to sit up here. Not only these four members, every other member that's been up here, there's been a few more in my tenure sitting up here, there's been a few more that have come through. And it's been a privilege and honor. So, thanks a lot. Ryan, especially. It's not an easy job to put up with. You have five very strong, opinionated people who are telling you all very much what to do as a group and collectively and individually. It's a very difficult job, so I give them a lot of credit. And everybody, all the directors are the same. So thank you very much for this. I appreciate it.
Keith, I don't know how you're going to follow that.
No, I'm not going to follow this one. I just have two quick things. One is urgent.
CBT board, come on. We didn't have that.
I want to hear about, I want to ask you about the Great Day in the Country. And I only asked it because I was asked at church that day where the handicap parking was going to be. Chief, if you can give them a little area of the suburb, you know, and I can pass along the picture.
I can tell you right now.
Okay.
If you want to hear.
Sure.
There is handicap parking in the parking lot that's adjacent to the park, which is the Oviedo Boulevard and Central Lake Lane. And there's handicap parking in there. There is a cost for those parking spaces, which is $10 for all of them. There's handicap parking along the Oviedo Boulevard, just on the north side of Central Lake Lane, because it will be closed from Central Lake Lane to Mitcham Avenue. And there's handicap parking there. We do have two bus shuttles running, one from the Reformed Theological Seminary. There'll be two buses running constantly. They'll drop them off at Michael Burr Way and City Plaza Way. And then one, there's going to be one at Citizens Bank. It's going to come up over the Oviedo Boulevard, drop them off at the parking lot up there. So there is parking and, you know, it's just scattered and divided. And you know, like anywhere, like even the Great Day in the Country, people are going to find places and you're going to see driveways and businesses open up and.
But selling parking.
Yeah.
There's not car shuttles too.
No, no car shuttles now.
That's true.
We were advised against that.
Okay.
You know, and there's parking at City Hall.
It'll be like Camping World Stadium, so we don't find empty lines like selling parking.
That's right. That's right.
Even if they don't.
Okay, thanks. The other thing was, I just wanted to say I had a great time at the barbecue on the show bar. And I mention that because it's a downtown Orlando event. And I go to remember here because, you know, barbecue is so.
What happens in D.C.?
Yes, I remember that in D.C. But I was approached by more than one person, actually two or three, that had just moved to Oviedo and moved to this area. One guy from E.P.A. in Oviedo for their new homes. So I thought that was very interesting. The folks are looking to us as a destination, a place to come to make their home and to plan their pursuit. So that's all I had, but I want to wish you both the best. And I want to wish you both. Cindy, you're more than a senior.
I second that.
Good luck to you all.
Looks like I'm up. You know, I mentioned this briefly earlier. Sitting together six years as a group really let the city focus on a path. And let us get a lot of things done. Unfortunately, a lot of it, we're getting done through a major recession, and a lot of tough decisions had to be made. But it enabled us. If we had a big turnover, if things kept changing, we're going to make so much more difficult. So the city is just, and their citizens, I should say, are just so lucky to have these two sitting with the other three of us. And it's keeping that continuity going. The new members are going to have big shoes to fill, like I said earlier. Whomever that can be, we should all know by about 7:30 tomorrow. So we look forward to having everybody up here and having whomever that is become part of this family. Because you are part of the family once you sit up here. It's not quite as intimidating as it looks. And no matter what you all think, I don't care who the seven of you are, you'll be up here like deer in headlights for about three, three or four meetings, at least we take. So that's everybody. And we were all the same, we all met there. But we wish everybody well. The event this morning, Councilman Stephen Schenk touched on it, Jay, that was, that was really cool. I must say, I know they've got all changed around on Shrew and it went from being a public event to a private, small event. But I think the way Jay did it himself, eventually, the way you put it together, the way you brought the high school kids in there, if we had had a big public event, what we saw happen wouldn't happen. And as Keith described it, that young lady who was very articulate and very gracious, spent time with those kids, signing autographs, taking selfies. I mean, she appreciated the proclamation of Jamie Simpson Day and the words that we all had to say, but she really lit up when she told us to basically don't go away and she got to hang out with these kids and just send that light with them. So that is what Oviedo is all about. I mean, I gotta, I gotta say, we have a lot of great kids. We have another religion, somebody who lives in our community, wasn't born and raised here, who competed in the, I think it was the high school, if I'm not mistaken. There's somebody out in Chuliot area, Geneva, questioning. So, I mean, we've got these kids throughout this community. And we have.
That way.
Yeah, I was going to say, we have two high school quarterbacks playing in the NFL right now, baseball player, pitcher for the Oviedo High, pitching on a white tee, which I can probably, you know, you follow baseball more than.
Singos.
There you go. So, I mean, it's just amazing what happens in this community. And then, you know, just academics, arts, I mean, we can go on and on. So Oviedo is a special place. Councilman Britton said, yes, people want to be here. Yes, the city's growing. That's because of what we've all created. You know, what was instilled in us from the early days is still here. Folks want to be here. And there's a good reason why they want to be here. It's because we all welcome them, just like somebody welcomed us at one point. So, good luck to everybody tomorrow. And it's going to be the longest.